Scott, you would think it. But I don't recall ever seeing it signed there all the years I saw it out there.
Name of that bill.
The other is Spain.
Spain, yeah.
And there's one in Taffel by the reservoir.
Yeah.
About to open the board of schools Board of Education meeting for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is five thirty-one P M. Mister Perry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was gonna wait for you to be ready, Mark.
You're the best dressed of us tonight, so.
Thank you.
For the record, Amber, would you please call the roll?
We have Christine Distaccio, Greg Perry, Harleen Charmelis, Robert Aldine, Mark Kulos, Kevin Seitani, and Aaron Daniels. We do have four of them.
Thank you. Moving on, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education's meeting on April the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Aaron Daniels, so move.
One second.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? So voted. Awards. Kristen.
Thank you.
Your favorite part?
It is my favorite part. So we have a student from Veterans Elementary School who can come forward. He's not here yet. May I have permission to go a little later?
Absolutely.
Could you, would you mind signaling me? Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Moving on to the report of the superintendent, please.
Thank you so much. So this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just want to highlight at the beginning to say how really appreciative we are of the work of our teachers. They work tirelessly for our students. They're always there if we need them. They, this is more than a profession to them. It is a devotion, and so we celebrate them, and we hope you will as well and keep them in your, in your thoughts. And if you can thank a teacher, this is the week, every, every day is a great day to thank a teacher, but I think it goes a really long way this week. As a mom of several teachers, I, I, I know that they're exhausted come May, and it will make their day. I have three recognition awards that I had the honor to bestow upon two staff members and a student. And the first one was the Key is Me Teacher Award recipient for May was Laura Rate. She is our Student Services Auto District Liaison. And the, the words that accompanied her nomination is that Laura is a wonderful candidate for the Key is Me Award because she works tirelessly every day without ever complaining and always with a smile on her face. For the past few months, she has been taking on the role of two employees covering for another department. Not only has she handled the extra caseload during our busiest time of the PPT and five oh four meeting season, but she's also navigating through the new C T Seds program, which is not easy for anyone. This is the new platform this state has brought forward for student I E Ps. Laura is such a joy to have in the office. We are so thankful to work alongside her on a daily basis and are blessed to call her our friend. Thank you for all that you do, Laura. I make a different support staff award recipient went to Sarah Herrick, who is an administrative assistant in the Human Resources Department. Sarah has worked for the Norwich Public Schools since two thousand and seven in a variety of roles. She's worked in the central office since two thousand and fourteen and is currently in the Human Resources Department. She is an enthusiastic team player who always is willing to do whatever it takes for the department. She takes pride and ownership in everything that she does. One of her responsibilities, one of her responsibilities is to keep track of teachers who are awaiting certification and certification renewals. She is a tireless advocate for our teachers and does everything possible to assist them with what is often a frustrating and slow process. Most recently, after a particularly challenging situation with one of the certification office, one of the certifications, once that cert, cert was finally issued, Sarah went out of her way to congratulate the employee by personally delivering flowers to her at her school. Thank you, Sarah, for all that you've done for the Norwich Public Schools. Sarah is most deserving of this award. So congratulations to Sarah. I had the pleasure of visiting Quanic and gave a nominee letter award Elena Gardner. She's a grade four student at Quanic. And this nomination was submitted by her teacher, Cassie Bradford. Elena came to us this year, and she is a wonderful addition to our Quanic family. She comes to school each day smiling and ready to learn. Her laugh is contagious, and she makes everyone around her smile. Elena always puts forth her best effort and is an active class participant with a positive attitude who is a friend to all. I don't know how to better sum it up than that. Congratulations, Elena. So I have the COVID data tracking, which I cannot wait to eliminate from my report next year. We are in a really good place for the vacancies, teacher vacancies for next year. Some of these that are on my report that was published Friday are already filled, but please, if you know of someone who has bilingual or T S O L teacher experience, reading specialist, phys ed or health or speech language therapist, please let them know that we are still hiring for next year. We, a new item for you is that we are holding our first district-wide kindergarten registration this year. It's going to be held on June first in all elementary schools. Each school had their own way of welcoming in students. We felt it was important to make that a similar process in each school. Students and their families will be welcome to tour the schools and the classrooms and meet their teachers. Translation services will be provided. The bus company will bring a bus so the students can experience getting on and sitting in the big seats. The school nurse, the psychologist, social worker, speech language pathologist, special educators, kindergarten teachers, and principal will address the children and their parents. And then there will be a subsequent orientation in August for students who registered, you know, between June and, and the beginning of the school year. I've also given you some kindergarten registration data. We already have two hundred and thirty-five kindergarteners fully registered for kindergarten this year. Our most is at Moriarty in Stanton. And if you want to register your child for kindergarten, it's an online process. If you have difficulty with that, our staff and registration are eager to help you. We have a wonderful report by our Equity Officer, Sarah Dusso, talks about our, our attendance trends in the district, what the deans of culture and climate and the equity coaches do. Equity coaches had open office hours. They're creating professional learning groups, working on the work in our equity policy and plan. Sarah also put forth behavior logs, family engagement events. There were wonderful events that happened this month or are happening at Bishop and Mahan. They're having math nights. Global hosted a women's celebration night. Mahan had multicultural night and a literacy night and a night for anti-bullying and internet safety. Quanic Curriculum Night focused on math and literacy games. Sarah has also listed our McKinney Vento information. She wants to just remind the world that our school counselors are super busy right now, doing high school applications with our eighth graders and working on grade eight to nine, proving residency so that students can register for eighth, for ninth grade and get the electives that they would prefer. Doing that now is very, very important because you run out of space in those elective classes. And our volunteer report is up to two hundred and thirty-seven Norwich Public Schools volunteers, and that concludes my report.
The comments from the board? Comment. Christine.
It's just regarding the chronic absenteeism still being as high as it is, even though, as you said, it's trending downward. But, you know, we only have a month and a half left of school. I didn't know if you want me to ask a question now or wait till tomorrow. No, I'm, I'm, I'm just still worried about this. I mean, they're still so high.
We are too. And, you know, we have, we're using the attendance works information. Our principals and teachers are doing positive behavior, you know, contact with the parents. We have home visits that go on. This is a, a year where we've had more home visits than ever before with the leave grant. And we are struggling to get students to come to school in almost every school.
Because even, even preschool, I said, you know, because our, I forget how we, they gain admittance, admittance back. Because are kids ever turned away from preschool because of the numbers?
Certainly, they could be, but usually our, our preschool program has, I can't say that. I, I would call on Jenna to ask if we've turned anyone away. But our preschool program is a preschool special education program with community partners. So typically, the way enrollment works is when a child turns three, where they move in and they're preschool age eligible, then they would come. The difficult part for that is they have a first day of school every day of the year. So if a child turns three on June first, that's their first day of school. And so it's really hard to predict enrollment. But in terms of having a high absenteeism rate, that's not unusual from my perspective. A lot of things come into play. Little ones in their first time at school, they tend to get sick more often because they're now exposed to people outside of their family. And so they, you know, all, you know, get in very close proximity and touch the same toys. And, and so that, that's not unusual. We see the same thing in kindergarten and first grade. When I was a first grade teacher for the first time, I would, was never so sick in my life. It's just, you know, the, the interaction.
Well, my concern about the preschool number was that if kids are chronically out, that if they're taking up a spot for somebody else, that would have better attendance, because I understand the germ.
Yeah, that's a very good point. I, I think also that when you're a parent of a preschool or kindergarten student, you're, you're not feeling the pressure of, okay, they're, they're not going into school today quite as much as if they were in middle school where they're missing, you know, a test or an assignment. And so I know that our staff does a really good job of explaining that if you have excellent attendance in preschool, then that will serve you all the way through life, you know, and, but it is hard. It's, it's hard to, to, to get them to come in.
I know this question came up before, like from Stanton, for Stanton and Global. I mean, Global at thirty-six percent as of end of April, well, April twenty-first. I mean, and they're still seeing like just a mixture of reasons for their absences.
So the absence report that we see will show parental excused, unexcused, doctor's note. They might be out because they have a suspension.
Right.
And, you know, it will, it will differentiate, but it's, it's all over the board.
It's just amazing. I hope it just, I hope it improves with the new year. It's just scary looking at these numbers. So scary. Like you said, if they're not gonna learn, not be in the school.
To me, funny in your report, Dr. Strangefellow, is the residency officer report, which always has been a point of contention, not contention, of a question of by our city council on how we're doing. And, and this month alone, I mean, eight students have been found not eligible for our services, but the cost factor of over two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for eight students is just astronomical, and people wonder why our, our budget is so high. And then we have students that are, you know, that are going here that shouldn't be going here. So I, I applaud to Mister Peckman and his, his staff. One, two, that how much they are saving, saving us money. And I hope that the taxpayers realize that if we didn't have this person, we'd be paying more.
In three years and six months, his program has saved the district nine point eight million dollars.
Is there any other comments from the board? None. Tamara?
All right. Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to let you know that May is a very busy month for assessments. So we have started our smarter balanced assessment, reading and math, and G S S will happen towards later of the month. And then we're, we have to cycle back also and administer our diagnostic, our diagnostic for iReady as well and then as well as DIBL. So when we're talking about attendance, it is very important that they are in school so that we can have, assess where they are, where they're ending the year, so we can make any adjustments for the upcoming year and to inform, you know, our staff on how best to support our students. The second thing I wanted to make mention is we are hosting a district makers fair. So this is scheduled at Global for May eighteenth. It's open to, to, to families and students across the district. And it is to bring STEM alive for students and families. So we will have activities and engagement that's happening at Global on May eighteenth. And then just the last thing I just wanted to make mention that we do have the reports from the M L L director and the adult ed director. They're there. So if you have questions with regards to that, I can take those questions and get follow-up with you with the answers. And that concludes my report.
Questions for the board. Mark?
I just want to point out, I'm so happy to see that field trips are back in, in the mix that our middle schools and elementary schools are going to local areas of interest again. I mean, it's important to be in school, but you learn a lot more when you, you happen to go out and see something in person.
Absolutely. And I just want to, you know, comment to our school staff and our principals who have, you know, organized and coordinated those field trips to give students, you know, excursions, especially at this time of the year where it's very difficult to keep them engaged and excited about learning when the weather is starting to become so nice and is so tempting to do other things as opposed to coming to school. So kudos to them.
Anything else?
I had a quick question and regards to the grants, the funding opportunities for summer camp. I'm wondering how parents or students can know more about how they can access.
Yes. So we're currently with Norwich Rec to determine how to best proceed with that. But what they will do is go to Norwich Rec and apply through Norwich Rec for those opportunities.
Anyone else? Christine?
I don't know if this is the time to ask this question, but as I had asked you through an email a while back about the decision to have summer school virtual.
Yep.
Now is all right. The reasons that we're giving for why we were doing it virtually, I was just wondering if we could review those.
I, I believe I did answer, I did answer that, correct?
Yes, you did. I think after speaking with Kristen. No, because there were some stats based on before.
There's a variety of reasons.
Yes.
It's never been a part of our operation budget. We rely on grant funding. So in the past, we were only able to offer it to kindergarten or kindergarten and first grade. The year before, or the, the year before I started here, we had offered it to students, and then the grant money didn't come in, and we weren't able to offer it. We're, we're now phasing out a lot of the major grants that were able, that we were able to provide full access last year. I think it was very important. We targeted money to make sure that students weren't in isolation, that they were able to come in. Our first year back from COVID, we had a quasi-academic lens to it. It was on socialization and introducing yourself to, to friends that you hadn't seen in a while. And, and Tamara and her staff put forth a lot of opportunities to go on field trips and have musical experiences brought in. Last year, it was still a lot of that. We opened it up to pretty much everybody in the school district that wanted to come. And the gains instructionally were not the same as our online program that was focused mainly on iReady. So this year, in terms of the amount of staff that we could afford to hire, the decision was made to try the online version again, knowing that if parents wanted an opportunity for in-person, that the rec didn't have to compete with us this year. It was hard for the rec in the last two years to really gain momentum with their programs because we offered a free program for everybody.
Even when ours was in conjunction with hers.
I don't know if Tamara wants to add.
Yeah, just, just a little bit. And just to go back to what Kristen said about, you know, the funding. We spent millions of dollars with trying, with the, the vast offerings that we did offer in relation to returning from COVID, building social emotional learning skills, connecting. So exactly what Dr. Strangefellow just mentioned. And then previously, I think it was my first year here, I real, it was new to me that we had only offered summer school for, what was it, K three? That was really it, and no other grades. So that was also new. So this, the last couple of years, we opened it all the way up to those who were up to seventh grade, so from kindergarten to seventh grade. And so we still wanted to continue to offer that, that level of support and streamline it to make sure that we're supporting students within academic areas. And because our staff are very familiar with iReady, and it does have the tracking and the monitoring components to help support targeting specifically student needs. And then also with the new mandate around reading, there is a report now that we will have to give to the district with regards to intensive reading support for grades K through three. So that's new for us this year that we will also be doing, and we're waiting to get more information from C S D E with regards to that.
Another piece the parents should be aware of is that students who are eligible for extended school year through the special education program, that is in-person. And so again, it's, it's not everybody. But I think Lisa covers that in her report, and if not, I'm sure she'll be able to add some pieces.
What's that last?
Several weeks in July.
Yeah, I'll make sure I. I don't know if now's the right time about the new health curriculum that we were advised about that's starting. Is this an appropriate time to discuss that?
The one from the ad hoc meeting?
Yes.
It's not really a health curriculum, but it's a.
People are regarding it that, that it's being added to that. Is that how you address that? Well, you probably don't even know yet, right?
Let me just pull, pull it up while you, you can stall for me for a minute. I want to make sure I'm using.
I'm just curious. It's just gonna be an opt-out option.
I don't think so.
The mandate.
It's a, it's. Right. It's.
For the younger grades.
So it's, the Connecticut General Assembly introduced a law which passed, and it's providing, it's an act concerning free menstrual products. And it's a speak of, you know, ending period poverty and bringing forth a significant amount of products that are going to be at the cost of the school departments. We're going to need to comply by September and have a person, a staff member in every school identified as someone who will be able to make sure, certain that there are plentiful products in a variety of offerings in every girl's restroom and at least one boy's restroom and all non-gender specific restrooms in, in every school that has grades three through eight. Well, for us, it's eight, but in other school departments, it's through grade twelve. So for us, that will be every school, both middle schools, seven elementary schools, the Transition Academy, Adult Education, just not Bishop. And there has to be a, a variety of, of offerings. There has to be student representatives who will, you know, be the ambassadors of this work to talk about how, how these products are marketed, to, to let staff know when they're unavailable. And, you know, we, we thought about if, if, if a young lady goes to receive the products and there are five hundred and they, they need them for their home, where there are, you know, many people who don't have the, the means to, to afford these, they could take them all. And so someone on staff has to be continually patrolling the stockpile of, of the products. And then there are, there is education. We haven't figured out if it's, the education would happen through a health class. They haven't provided those details yet. This is coming from the Connecticut Department of Health and not directly from the Department of Education. But there needs to be instructions for several of these products. And we talked about it at the ad hoc meeting. Bob Serpensky brought it to the attention of me and Tamara, Lisa, and Laura Dietrich, who is our nursing supervisor, because it will have a significant impact on budget. And, you know, we have to, we're looking forward to finding out from other school departments, which employee would be, would be designated. Because, you know, as I said at the ad hoc meeting, everybody else already has a full-time job. And so the nurses already have a full-time job, the custodians already have a full-time job, the principals, the teachers, and support staff. And so it would probably be an additional role that we haven't budgeted for, and I, I don't know if, if anyone in the state has budgeted for it. We think that it will be a surprise, especially to the parents of very young children, that they might have to have conversations with their kids about products and usage a lot earlier than they had anticipated in their family. If students are coming in in kindergarten and saying, what's this? And talking with their teacher or talking with their parent. And so there is an entire sort of marketing proposal and plan where kids make posters and things go home, educative things go home to families and sort of stations set up throughout the school. So it's, it's a big deal, and it's coming very soon. So.
So we'll be sending some kind of communication home to parents, obviously.
Yes, I can't wait to do that.
Because I've heard from another talent, they are being able to offer an opt-out clause.
So I haven't heard about the opt-out clause, but Bob has heard that there is some objection. Bob, did you want to?
Yeah.
I know this is your favorite topic to talk about. Typically, just send it my way, but I, I can't articulate.
Many school districts that I would say had the same reaction as we did when we found out about this from a cost standpoint and so on and so forth as a surprise. And there's a bill before the legislative body to postpone this action for one year. I don't know where it stands, if it's in committee or when it will be voted on, but that's the latest proposal is to at least delay it one year.
Yeah, to spring it on in some last minutes.
Yeah, it kind of snuck in the.
Yeah, typical this year.
Last legislative session at the end.
Thank you.
And I can also see another problem area as it is, our sewer system is not the, the best for most of our buildings. So I can see misuse of the products or misuse of disposal of the products and ending up in clogged, more clogged toilets or clogged sewer lines.
That's a point well taken. I was at a meeting at Casbo about ten days ago, and that was a common concern of many school districts.
Like we shouldn't stand in pipes like we keep reiterating.
But even just, even any toilet is concerned. But even just even any toilet concern. Students will find new ways.
Anything else? Lisa?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to just draw your attention to the enrollment up at the top as it usually is. And I wanted to highlight our safety care curriculum training. We have our first cohort of trained individuals in the district, which was a big accomplishment for the behavior team led by B C B A Amanda Williams. We had a training actually right here in this room on May 3rd and 4th. As you may recall, safety care curriculum is all about de-escalation. And there's a very heavy emphasis on that and different skills and strategies that you can implement very quickly. And that was the feedback from the group that did take the training. They were reported to be very receptive and extremely happy that they could apply this practice in their next day with students. So I was very pleased. We do anticipate that we'll have even more trainings coming up as we do a slow rollout over the next several and last weeks of school. And then, of course, full implementation into next school year. In the report, you'll see kind of an organizational breakdown of how that plan may go. There may be some tweaks along the way as to how we get there, but our behavior team is very dedicated and they have all, except one, have been trained as trainers. So we're really, really progressing in that area. In addition, I wanted to touch upon extended school years, as that was already mentioned this evening. And so we'll welcome, anticipated welcoming over 100 learners this summer for our extended school year program, which is regarding eligibility through the P P T process for our students who have disabilities and I E P supports. We will be switching to two locations this year rather than having it all over the district. We will be centered here at Kelly and over at K Street as well. So we're in the process of planning that. I also wanted to give you an update. Our I D E A grant submission is due this week. Lots of things happening in May. Have we noticed this? In addition to that, and in part of the grant comments and discussion within the grant, we have a lot on inclusive practices. As you know, we've been talking a lot about that. And I just wanted to share with you something from the T I S Center, which is work related to time, instructional engagement and support that we started talking about in our district leadership academy and will be continuing to use the North Star in our work towards building more meaningful and inclusive practices across the district. Wanted to bring that to your attention. As well as you can see, some spring has sprung at Kelly Middle School. That was a lot of fun. And I also wanted to mention that you'll find the school health report, what's happening in the school nurse's office included each month with my report. And I wanted to give a huge shout out and thank you to our school nurses because it is their day tomorrow as well, May 10th. So, you know, please thank a nurse as well. And we have wonderful nurses here in district. And any of the pieces in this report that you have any questions about, please feel free to talk to me about them. The nurses are very busy, very busy. Lots of field trips, as you mentioned, going on, nursing needs related to that, C P R certifications for staff and lots of screenings and attending meetings. So very, very busy. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I see that the out-of-district placements has actually had an upswing. And how is that affecting our budget?
So we have had, I think we, last time I reported, there were 12 between September and last date, I indicated to you what the number was. So that number may fluctuate a little bit more in that we will have some students returning back to district. This number is inclusive of several diagnostic placements that we had outstanding and we are reading on those students. So we do anticipate there to be a decrease in that number. And that is always the first thing that we think about with our placements. So hopefully, we will have a decrease in that number.
Okay, and has the percentage mixed change to more high-needs, special-needs placements?
Well, typically, the students that we do have on a diagnostic placement, we're looking for programming solutions for those students. Students who, you know, were not able to maintain their education, their appropriate education here in district at the time. A lot of times, it's a situation in which, you know, maybe a mental health need or crisis or something that's related to their disability that needs a more therapeutic approach. And so those students are, you know, often we have to have those discussions. We do everything we can to program within the district at all times. But there will be students that have more supports needed in a therapeutic placement. So it may impact our costs, obviously, to some extent, but we're hoping to get some of those students back in district. I do think, and I should add, that in the change and shift to a safety care curriculum and are also building the foundation of our behavioral supports. So having a B C B A in each building, and we're almost there, and having our registered behavior technicians and really building that team, I think we'll be able to welcome additional students back.
Thank you. You got a question? Bob?
Good evening. I'm going to have to talk then about excess cost reimbursement, which is becoming, fastly becoming one of my least favorite subjects. As you know, we have some serious budget difficulty this year that are being driven by higher special ed expenses. That's true for many districts throughout the state. And as a result of that, the submissions by school districts to the state for reimbursement for those higher-than-expected needs has increased by 16% over last year. So like myself, all the other districts were asking the state, what is the 91% going to mean to those districts? We want to see it because we were going to get reimbursement impact in May. So about 10 days ago, the state sent out guidance on the higher-than-expected requests. So as you know, we were placed in the third tier, which would have increased our reimbursement up to 91%. And that's what it built into our forecast and used for our next year's budget. The reality is the state has capped the amount of funds. So the 91% bracket has been reduced down to 78.9%. And so what that means for us this year, if we were to receive the 91%, we would be getting a reimbursement, if it were uncapped, at $2,608,000. With the cap going from 91 down to 78.9%, we're going to get $2,580,000, which is a shortfall of $550,000. And that's impactful for this district and I'm sure every other district in the state. What was in the budget was 1.3 million. So we're still going to get $716,000 more. But it's still $550,000 short of where we should be. So the district is basically eating those extra higher expenses. I use a conservative forecast in my, for the reimbursement. So because of that, we're not going to be that much worse. We'll be about $150,000 worse from my last forecast. And I'll have to modify next year's budget accordingly and reduce the rate for reimbursement from 91% probably down to 80 or 79%. So that would have a little bit of impact. So as far as the 2223 budget goes, the budget freeze that was put in place has really slowed down purchases significantly. If I compared this April's purchases to last year's in the, what I would call the not discretionary accounts, but the variable accounts, spending has dropped to $6,600 versus just under $91,000 from last April. The year-end deficit is a little bit worse than last month. As Lisa indicated, there's an uptick in placements again since we last met. So deficit is going to be between 1.9 and 2.3 million, mostly driven by special ed costs. So we have favorable variances in other accounts, which will hopefully cause the overall deficit to be less than this total spend deficit. So that's the bad news for tonight.
Enough?
Have any questions? But.
Any good news?
It's nice weather outside.
Any questions from the, from Bob?
The legislative session, it's still in session. So we'll act on some of these funding education bills in a positive way.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. For the board members, we had well over 150, I think, comments sent to us. They were all combined in emails and part of your packet concerning food service workers. So I don't know if you have a chance to look at it, but is there anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have Lynn Bustamante signed up.
The board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the board on matters within the board's authority. On behalf of the board, I wish to remind those offering comments that consistent with our bylaws, we ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. And there is a maximum of 30 minutes for each subject matter. All speakers must maintain appropriate standing posture form with vigorous or inappropriate conduct permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the board and not to any individual board member or individual member of the administration. As noted, public comment is an opportunity to convey your views to the board. It is not a question-and-answer session. Board and the administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. The board and the administration will determine whether, when and how to address questions that arise during public comment period. And lastly, when you come to the microphone and have a seat, please state your full name and your full address for the record.
My name is Lynn Bustamante. I live at 15 Hammond Avenue here in Norwich. I'm a food service manager over at Stanton School and I've been with M P S since 2005. I wish to express some concerns with the transition of a successful self-operating program to a paying food service contract company. As many food service workers have been employed for five years or more, the concern for loss of seniority, lower wages and job stability is weighing heavily on everyone's mind. This is a list of the positive points as to continue a self-operating program. Greater flexibility to implement new programs. It creates more options for delicious and nutritious meals served. Focus on students' food preferences. Fosters better employment practices resulting in better employee morale. Keep the locality of the relationship between current workers and students. To continue transparency and accountability between business, office, food service, employees, faculty and students without a middle name. Retaining a contract company does not relinquish the accountability of the district for its compliance with existing federal and state program requirements. Entering into an agreement with a contract company adds new responsibilities above and beyond the current self-operating food service program that will result in additional expenses for the district. The Norwich School Food Service Program has self-operated since day one and I ask the Board of Ed to adhere to the if it ain't broke, don't fix it approach for the betterment of all involved. M P S must also employ personnel to manage the contract company under their contractual obligations. This includes ensuring that all federal and state regulations are met through contract company, including but not limited to all meal pattern requirements, dietary meal specifications, affordability of meal item inventory, correct usage of USDA foods and student satisfaction. M P S will still be accountable for proper use of the nonprofit school food service allowable account for expenses that the management company must be knowledgeable and in compliance with federal regulation use of nonprofit monies. Lastly, M P S is still responsible for the oversight of the food service program and provisions of all contractual agreements with the state of Connecticut for meal reimbursement monies. Ultimately, outsourcing with a contract company will cost the district more money based on the new responsibilities for M P S of overseeing the company through all the provisions and requirements per the food service program regulations. The Bureau of Child Nutrition Programs through the Connecticut Department of Education provides all resources concerning nutrition, dietary guidelines, menu items, program regulations needed for the M P S food service to operate successfully on its own without a contract company. Norwich Food Service prides itself on being one of the most self-sustaining forward-thinking programs that the other districts strive to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
No.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Is there anyone else for public comment? I declare public comment closed.
Mark? Okay, before we continue, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. It's my draft motion, move that the Norwich Board of Education add the following item to the agenda for tonight's meeting. Discussion and possible action regarding notice of termination of the contract with Norwich Free Academy in correspondence to Norwich Free Academy regarding the same. Under our contract obligations, we're supposed to give at least a two-year notice to N F A. Our contract is actually through the end of June of 2025. So it's coming up on the. The two-year. Notice provisions.
Okay. You got a motion on the floor?
Can we have some clarification?
First, you got seconded, then you had a discussion.
Okay, then we can. Okay, I'll second it.
Discussion.
Okay, the, yeah, basically, if we do not notify N F A that we're going to terminate and renegotiate the contract, there's an automatic renewal clause for the next five-year period. So it cuts down our options significantly. So in the next two years, I mean, they're going to have new administration there. I mean, we're in budget problems, they're in budget problems. By opening negotiations, we should be able, you know, maybe we'll come with a, up with a better favorable deal. Maybe we'll agree on the same points. But if we don't do that, we're locked into the next five-year renewal with the same terms as we've had previously.
I understand.
Kristen?
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that it was the negotiation of a successor contract. And so you need to notify them that you're planning to terminate the contract so that you can enter negotiations and it doesn't just roll over. I didn't want people in the audience to think that you're not sending children to N F A.
That's why, that's why I have to clarify. It's a little startling when you first hear.
Yeah, no, it's just to renegotiate terms of the contract.
I understand now.
And we may end up with the same terms, you know. But if we, if we don't do that, if we don't give the notice, we're precluded in a month from not doing it.
Yeah, same, I understand, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Thanks, Mark. Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor and we have a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Subvoted unanimously for the attendance that's here tonight.
Okay, this time I'd like to make the motion that the Norwich Board of Education authorizes the board chair to send written notification to Norwich Free Academy providing notice of the termination of the contract with Norwich Free Academy on the expiration of the current contract, June 30th, 2025, and requesting the commencement of negotiations for a subsequent contract between the parties.
Aaron Daniel seconded that motion. Motion on the floor and we have a second discussion.
So basically, all this is, is not.
So basically, all this is, is not authorizing a new contract, it's just authorizing you to notify that we're looking to, uh, enter into new contract negotiations upon the expiration of the current contract.
I'm just notifying the lawyer of what you're going to do. Just wanna make sure.
Hearing no further comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously by the, uh, by the parties that were in this tonight. We have three items that are, uh, for first read. And are indicated on, under new business. As action items, we'll, um, have first read on this and then, uh, vote on, on the, uh, at the next, uh, board meeting in the month of June. Unfinished business?
It's actually not a first read, it's just a motion. It's not a policy. So they're actually gonna vote, it's actually an action, I know.
Oh, okay, okay.
Each of you, we're so used to having first reads.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the, an annual.
This, this is the annual thing.
Oh, was it the, the, okay.
The food, yes. The, the good food at school things. Yeah, all right. Uh, five point one, action item, discussion of possible action regarding participation in healthy food options of HFC. What's HFC?
Usually Aaron could help in.
Hi, Aaron, we'll head to, um, HFC, healthy food certification. It's an additional ten percent reimbursement we get on every lunch that we serve. As long as we abide by rules that the state puts out. Which is, you know, lower sodium, no trans fats, what's on their list, go with that. But I would like to say first, last week was National School Lunch Hero Week, and Friday was National School Lunch Hero Day. Um, so I just wanted to acknowledge my staff. My gifts got damaged in Florida, so they didn't get anything for me. But I want to acknowledge them in person, with in front of you all, on all the hard work they do. And I also wanted to go over our, our program a little. We do breakfast, lunch, and supper in all the schools. We serve four outside schools. Some lunch, some breakfast, some suppers. We serve summer meals in the community as well as in programming around the city. And we also run the only licensed kitchen under the State Department of Consumer Protection for manufacturing food in a school. We take year, we take fresh produce from farms. We process it. It ensures that we can use it all year round and also enables us to sell it to other districts. So I just wanted to do that little part. Yeah.
I saw that there was an article in one of the local papers describing that.
Her, hers will not be to the size that ours is. Um, I don't think she realizes also for seafood, she needs a license from UConn. But that's not for me to do. She's talking on a smaller scale because she was up at Mansfield.
Okay.
Ours is actually licensed to the State Department of Consumer Protection. She's just talking about a little, small one. So. Um, but back to healthy food certification. The certification allows us to get an extra ten cents of reimbursement on top of each lunch we serve. The first section, the first vote which has to be read out loud and then voted on, um, says that we will sign on to do this healthy food certification. Um, the second one is choosing exemption. So like if you have a pizza party, I hate saying that, it can't interfere with lunch, any meal we have within thirty minutes of either way before or after. And it, the second one is beverages, which now, yeah, it is new. It, they reworded a lot of it. So basically, it just says we'll adhere to these
Same rules.
Same rules. You can't give out candy during the school day regardless. You can't use soda in the schools, all this other stuff, which is outlined here, but this is your vote right here. So. But it just has to be read.
All right, um, I've, I've got it here, so. Okay, I make a motion pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section ten dash two fifteen F. Norwich Public Schools certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activity on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Aaron Daniels, second that motion. We have a, uh, motion on the floor, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous by the members that are in attend, attendance tonight.
We have vote number two.
Go ahead.
All right, um, on action item five point two, make a motion the Norwich Public Schools will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events. But soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Greg Perry, I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted unanimously by the members in attendance tonight.
In item five point three, I make a motion that the Norwich Public Schools will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in section ten dash two-two-one Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously by the members in attendance tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Does that mean my spouse still comes home with those old baggies of, of P-pods?
Yes, yep. We get P-pods all day long.
Um, any else on the new business? Hearing none. Let's go to unfinished business. We have, do have an action item. Uh, discussion of possible action regarding, uh, policy nine three two five, which is meeting conduct. You have a motion from the floor? Aaron Daniels, so moved. Second.
Kevin Seitana, I was second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted unanimously by the members in attendance tonight. We're gonna close up all those spaces, right? All right, let's go on to, uh, committee reports. Budget Expenditure Committee. Already gave that. How about?
Ad hoc.
Wants to report on ad hoc today.
I might have done that already with my, my, um.
I went and I, it was after another meeting, so I barely remember. Sorry, Joe.
No. Who, who else was there? I'm trying to remember.
Carleen. Kevin.
We just, he's younger than me, he remembers.
Um, we just, so the ad hoc committee, um, most of the discussion from recall, uh, regarded the, uh, the state mandate of the, uh, women's products in the, uh, public bathrooms of our schools. Um, you know, there was talks about, um, that, that's gonna be increased costs, you know, what kind of products are we, do we have to buy, um, for those students, you know, how much they can take, you know, who, if, if in terms of designating a member to regulate the state mandate, who's it gonna be? And if we have to hire a new position, you know, how much is that position gonna cost? So.
It's not our first unfan, unfunded mandate.
Right.
It won't be our last, no.
The scary thing, excuse me if I can interject, sorry now that I said I didn't want to. I know one figure that Bob mentioned, but of course that was out on the, you know, it could, it could be much more. It was a million dollars, you know? So that's why if they implement it this year, it's gonna be chaotic getting everything installed, and he's already been approached by vendors, even members mentioned that it, uh, people because they heard about it. But did they actually talk about it back in May? Was it, if something was put out there?
In March.
This vendor, you already, right?
I received the phone call from.
He's already getting calls.
Is responsible for distributing the grant funds. I learned about it, it was about six weeks ago. We would be receiving about ten to eleven thousand dollars to start implementing the program. And then we got the guidance from the Department of Health, which was kinda interesting because the, uh, legislative liaison for CASBO had been trying to get guidance for months from the state. When you found out I can't, he said, how did you get that? And I says, I don't know, it just showed up in my email. I didn't do anything to, special to get it, so, um, if the usage described in the, uh, Department of Health guidance is factual, it will become very expensive, um, no matter who pays the bill. But that's all speculation on the Department, Department of Health because they have, it, it using a study done in California. So who knows what this will be. From the ad hoc committee, we're meeting with the cabinet level to see what adjustments we can make to the budget to, um, we go back to the next meeting, I believe it's May eighteenth, to see where, what adjustments we can make.
And that's our last meeting, I believe, before, before, uh, budget is, uh, goes to the, uh.
It might be, it might not be. So.
The meeting was very congenial, we have to say, you know, everybody appreciates the transparency between us and, um, so from that position and, um, Mr. Alderman Delucia um, is very open during the meeting. Um, the frustrating part I find, as I did last year at this time, was that they can't offer up ideas for us to, you know, that's still our job to try to come up with ways of cutting the budget.
We did a pretty good job last year.
Yeah.
I thought.
Well, Bob, I, I really give a lot of credit to Bob with how he can move things around and, um, and of course, one of the things that was mentioned was getting NFA to, uh, increase the, um, allotment per student. Um, and so that's something that can be addressed in the future as we go about the, uh, non, non-designating other schools, so that'll definitely be a topic.
I think the, the one comment I'd make is, in terms of frustration, is that tuitions have become the single largest expense kind of in our budget now, and that includes the, uh, special ed placements which have increased dramatically and, um, we're seventy percent of NFA's enrollment and NFA was forced to implement a seven and a quarter percent. So when you factor in, um, tuition, transportation, um, those items account for almost fifty percent of our budget. And that puts us over four percent right there, so that makes it a difficult problem.
Um, moving on to, uh, Negotiation Committee.
Uh, we're still in negotiations with the Administrative Assistance bargaining unit. Still, you, is a, uh, a.
Policy Committee. Uh, the Policy Committee did not, uh, meet. School Building Committee, twenty, twenty twenty.
I don't know what happened. Uh, they had their meeting the same night, our last board meeting. I don't know, I don't think, I don't think they published the minutes yet from that, so.
There was a mixed up, yeah, there was a mixed up because we had a bunch of laws, yeah. But, um, I know he said there was just a presentation of some bills, um, you know, getting paid. And so they had, the meeting had to be held, but our next one is next, next week.
Yes.
And also our next ad hoc meeting is the eighteenth, so.
Mr. Chairman. Just, show of the dish, we are moving forward with getting updated enrollment numbers. And also moving forward to the submission to make the June thirtieth deadline, the reimbursement of the state. Thank you.
So we'll have board to report on that after we have our next meeting.
Um, IDCS?
At the last IDCS board meeting, there was a review and a revamp of the, or this undergoing revamp of the board bylaws. Um, discussion did not get to the point where they could vote on that, so that will probably be voted on next month. They will have new updated bylaws, uh, for how they operate. Uh, for policies, they passed their healthy food options policy. Um, and had first reads on a service animal policy, their admissions policy, and the administration of opioid antagonist policy. Um, they're retiring, uh, part of the remote learning policy, um, that had to do with remote learning on snow days. Uh, so that won't be a thing anymore. Uh, they approved the Pearson Math Program for grades kindergarten through fifth grade. Uh, there was a few events recently. Uh, the basket raffle took place a couple of weeks ago. They raised four thousand three hundred dollars for the foundation. Uh, the pre-K lottery was just held, and thirty-three students have been selected to be, uh, in the school for next school year. Uh, S-Back testing has started last week. And a bicycle rack was installed outside the school so that kids could bike to school and lock up their bikes. Uh, for an upcoming event, they are hosting a wine tasting at Prime Eighty-Two this week on May twelfth. Uh, you can go to the IDCS website if you'd like to register and be a part of that.
Thank you, Greg.
Lauren?
Um, nothing additional on the report, uh, that you have proposed, as was submitted.
Thank you.
You're talking about the same things we're talking about.
Uh, anybody got any board reports?
Uh, just from the, uh, MPS Educational Foundation, it is, uh, teacher appreciation. And you can send, uh, who is this, to your favorite teacher, so you can still apply through the, uh, the website. And send a little note of appreciation. And I believe it's a five-dollar donation.
Kevin?
Yep. Um, and for my board report, I had the pleasure to attend, uh, several of our schools, uh, so far up to this point, Kelly Global, Huntington, Stanton, Bishop, Manhattan Veterans. And I have, uh, a few more, uh, scheduled, but, uh, to go there and to see the students and their interaction with the teachers is, was an amazing thing. a few more, uh, scheduled, but, uh, to go there and to see the students and their interaction with the teachers is, was an amazing thing to see. Um, you know, here in Kelly, we got the robotics, students learning coding and all that, and the, uh, the chicken coop, uh, that they have here too.
Chicken's hatch, right?
Yep, three weeks old. And, um, I'm always big on, you know, students learning hands-on, uh, activities, because you can learn better and, uh, get that full experience. So it's good to see all the dynamics and, of course, uh, you know, the policies that the Board of Education has passed, uh, to see how they're being implemented, uh, within our district. So it was a positive, uh, thing to see as a board member.
So they'll be selling eggs to raise money for the school at seven dollars a dozen, is that?
Someday.
Someday. It's a bargain.
Yeah. Going back to, um, our agenda, uh, under the awards, the CAPS award, we're going to do that next month, uh, for our recipient, Elijah, uh, Similian, so it'll be great.
For accommodating that.
Yep.
He's not able to make it.
Do we need to vote to table it, or do we just say we're gonna do it? Okay. Fine, it's fine. Hit all the polls. Alright, um, and as you, we have the, uh, budget report, enrollment report, and the personal report is, uh, already listed in your, uh, board docs. I need a motion to go into an executive session, please.
Okay, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred, members of the Board of Education move to go into executive session for the discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. Dr. Chris Janey Stringfellow may be asked to participate for a summer all of the executive session at the request of the Board of Education.
Kevin Seitani, I will second that motion.
All are opposed.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. So voted unanimous by the members in attendance, we are now in the executive session at six forty-two P M.
We're hot. It's been...
Okay, it is now 8:45 PM. Coming out of executive session.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the superintendent's evaluation as discussed in executive session. Also that we grant the superintendent an additional year in the contract. And that's it.
Motion on the floor.
Kevin Zitani, I will second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All who opposed? Unanimous by the president, by the presidents of all the members tonight?
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Aaron Daniels, second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, I mean, the meeting is adjourned.